Okay, hey, looks like it's 1:30, so I think it's about time for us to get started again. And therefore, I would call the monthly meeting of the Ames Community College Board of Trustees to order. And let's all stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Members, you have before you the agenda. Had a little time to peruse it, I hope, and is there any additions or corrections to the agenda as it was presented in our packet?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Lyle. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Public comment, Timothy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. We have no public comments at this time.
Okay, alright, thank you. Consent agenda, once again, I think everybody's had a chance to, I hope, anyway, review it, we've had it for a while. Is there any comment, correction for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Lyle.
Second.
Thank you, Jean. Your teeth got a little loose there.
A little bit.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Now, board representatives, who do we have? Student government. And she told me she was really nervous, so.
Oh, boy. Hello? I think I can reach.
Okay, you're good.
Good afternoon, members of the board trustees, and Dr. B. Actually, I'm Lyle, sorry.
It's good. I can hear you.
So far, okay, I'm gonna start my report by telling you some SGA business for this month. We are conducting interviews this month to select next year's CAP and SGA board members. We will introduce new SGA executive board members in next month's BOT meeting, so you will know who they will be. SGA town hall meetings are going to be held in satellite campuses this month, with the hopes that we will be able to reach out students from those respective campuses and get feedback on how to help them in their locations and be better advocate on their specific needs. The location and dates are April 11th in Loveland, April 18th in Windsor, and the Fort Lepton campus. Just a reminder that the clothing drive's still going on. We have boxes around the campus if you wish to donate, and the clothing swap event will be April 23rd. Tomorrow, we have one of our biggest events of the semester. Frank Meek, author of the autobiography of a recovering skinhead, will be speaking at the perk at 12:15. Frank Meek was a skinhead leader and a neo-Nazi recruiter for years, before he was finally arrested and convicted of kidnapping and beating a member of a rival skinhead gang. While in prison, he befriended men he used to think he hated, men of different races. After being released from prison, Meek tried to rejoin his old skinhead gang but could not bring himself to hate those who he now knew to be his friends. Now, another speaker, author and founder of the Harmony Through Hockey, Frank's life stands for tolerance, diversity, and mutual understanding in racial, political, and all aspects of society. So please join us tomorrow, April 4th, at the perk, from 12:15 to 1:30, book signing from 1:30 to 3:00. This event is open and free for students, employees, and the community. We also have Holocaust One on One on April 8th, from 3:30 to 4:30, in the CDI. Dr. Joan Twain Filter, UNC history professor, explains how the Third Reich operated as a racial state dominated by a battle for survival between the Germans and Jews. Last but not least, SGA would like to thank Dr. Weiskaver and Frank, Mike Millsap, sorry, for including SGA in the planning of the new student building, as well as helping us with many other projects and ideas throughout the year. Thank you for going above and beyond this year. That's all I have.
Very good.
Also, I have some flyers for the Frank Meek event tomorrow on the front, if you guys are interested, for more information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, members? Okay, Staff Association, or, I'm sorry, Faculty Association, got ahead of myself.
I have the pleasure of sharing some great news that my fellow colleagues have been doing around campus. So there are several faculty accomplishments in your report this month, so I'm only gonna highlight just a few of them. The FTLC and the Council of Equity and Inclusion have been sponsoring an Ames Common Read this year. The book was called Outcasts United, and several of our faculty have facilitated these discussions on the book and then kind of going a little bit further into their own topics. So as you can see, in March, a few of the faculty-led discussions were, again and again, The Predictable Patterns of Genocide and the World's Failure to Respond, led by Dr. Teresa Reynolds, Associate Professor of Anthropology; Sports as the Middle Ground, How Sports Mediate Social and Cultural Transitions, led by Dr. Merle Funk, our history instructor; and The Refugee in All of Us, a Discussion About Community Collaboration Change and Superdiversity, led by Clint Hyner, one of our professors in history. There were some fun and exciting news under conferences. Dr. Shawna Washam, a professor of psychology, she took six Phi Theta Kappa students down to the Colorado-Wyoming Regional Conference in Cheyenne in March, and two of her students actually performed and competed and won, so she was very proud and was excited to be able to share this news. Betsy Nace gave a prepared speech and won first place, so she'll be actually moving on to the International Conference in April in Orlando, Florida, to continue competing. And Bailey Kawasaki was voted as Regional Vice President for Colorado and will represent Phi Theta Kappa at the regional level, so she was really excited. She does lots of great things with students and had loved the opportunity to be able to kind of share and bribe about that. A couple other acknowledgements this month. Colleen Martin, graphic design and rich media professor, had her entire class enter into a contest for the Union Colony Civic Center. They are doing a logo redesign competition, and so they actually entered into the contest. So I haven't heard yet if they've won. I haven't heard. I haven't heard. But, fingers crossed. But what was really neat about that is that the chair and the advisory board actually gave and recognized Colleen and her class for the efforts that they're doing with Ames and was so proud of the Ames students and their contribution. So it'd be great if they could win, but also I think just acknowledging that is really wonderful. Several faculty will be attending the eLearning Consortium of Colorado Conference in a few weeks. At this conference, they recognize exceptional efforts by faculty and instructors in the field of learning with technology and e-learning. Shell Costello, Associate Professor of English and Humanities, was nominated for the eLearning Educator of the Year Award. This award honors individuals who have provided outstanding online, hybrid, and blended teaching. So she'll be recognized at the conference for being a nominee, but we will find out if she's actually an award recipient at that conference. So I will be sure to update you all next month, Brooke will be here next month, but update you on if these nominees turned into award recipients. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have the Staff Association.
Good afternoon, trustees and Dr. B. ASA had a bit quieter month in March, but we used the time to make revisions to our charter, and it worked on planning our next event, a staff appreciation breakfast, which will happen this Friday. For March, there were six ripples, and I would like to highlight the ripple for Becca Herman. She is the Director of Student Leadership in Sale and was nominated by a student. The nomination says, "I have never seen a day where Becca isn't positive and smiling. Despite the challenges that she may face involving work and being a new mom, she has never let that affect her hard-working and caring personality. Becca is the definition of an empowered woman, and myself and so many others are lucky enough to work so closely with her. Ames Community College couldn't ask for a better director of student leadership."
Right.
And some other staff accomplishments this month. Barbara Kingston, Ty Bakel, and David Mont, all of Facilities and Operations, recently attended a conference where Barbara and Ty attended a three-day program at the University of Colorado Anshut's campus and completed Track Two of the Association of Physical Plant Administrators Leadership Program. Barbara, Ty, and David had already completed Track Three, and David completed Track One in February, and Barbara and Ty will attend Track One in May. Also, John Hannah of Information Technology attended JAMP 300 training and successfully completed the JAMP 300 certificate for JAMP Certified Administrator. Now, JAMP, in case you don't know, is the Ames Apple Device Management Platform. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, now, item number seven, and we have the president's report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start with our excellence at Ames for this month, and Dean McCaslin will introduce our student, Asamoah Boateng, who has a wonderful story to share with us and looking forward to hearing all about.
Good afternoon and thank you. What a privilege again. Here I am with another student to introduce to you. Asamoah Boateng is a student who has found his future here at Ames while serving our country and realizing a big dream, and so I'm just gonna do a little interview with Asamoah. So I'm gonna start with having you tell us a little bit about your life before Ames.
Alright, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Asamoah. I was born in Ghana, West Africa, moved to the United States about, when I was about 15 years old, moved to Denver, Colorado. I graduated high school in 2015, 2014, sorry, Overland High School, and decided to try college at Mason University in Grand Junction and majored in computer science. After a semester not going well, I decided to drop out and enlist in the Marine Corps. I've been in the Marine Corps Reserve for about four years now.
Yeah, and Asamoah told me, I see the thumbs up over here from Trustee Oxinger, you told me that was the best decision you made in your life, and you shared with me that after basic training and the marine basic training, you attended two different community colleges here in the state, and neither worked out for you. I'm interested in your path of how you got to Ames, and what do you think makes Ames different than the others? Because you've got some experience.
So, after boot camp and training and everything, I decided to try out college again and tried out two different community colleges out here in Colorado. It didn't work out because I felt like, as being a first-year generation student, I didn't have access to the resources to help me be successful. I didn't feel fitting or welcome, and I got recommended to Ames, and I feel like I had my success here at Ames because of the resources available and the great professors who are always ready to help you out in assistance, assist you in anything, and care about you and want you to be successful.
Asamoah also told me that he's self-supporting. In order to ensure that he does his best, he's holding himself accountable, self-supporting for his tuition, which I think is so interesting. Speaking of resources, which Asamoah talks about a lot, and here he is, a peer coach, a peer coach here at the college, so you're part of the resources, and I'm wondering what fuels your engagement on campus, Asamoah, and your work with your classmates, your peers?
I'm very passionate about helping people to get to their inner potential, and being a peer coach is one of the best things I love, Dean, about Ames is just being a bridge between students and resources. As I said earlier, being a first-year generation, first-generation student, I didn't have access to the resources, so being a peer coach helps me give and direct students to the right resources Ames has to offer to them.
And I know you started your very first class, you only took one class your first semester, it was AAA.
Yes.
And I think you were probably a little concerned about your grade point average, so I'm gonna ask you to tell the whole place what your grade point average is.
Right now, I'm at a 3.2.
3.2 GPA, yes! So, speaking of your GPA, let's talk about what you're gonna do going forward in your future. Why don't you share with us your plans for the way ahead?
My goal right now is to get my associate in business transfer while also getting a certificate in network analyst, and to transfer to CSU in 2020, and get a bachelor's in business, CIS, also to get my master's degree in theology. My end goal is to be a chaplain in the Navy.
A Navy chaplain with CIS experience. You're gonna be able to help a lot of people. You're gonna be a man of the cloth who can also be a man of technology.
That's the goal.
Alright, good, good, good. Alright, last question. What makes you proud, Asamoah, when you tell others that you go to Ames Community College?
The biggest thing is their resources, how caring the professors over here, and the people over here, it's like being part of a family, so I'm proud of being there.
Music to our ears, isn't it? So lastly, I just wanna say from all of us, good luck. He's applying to be a peer coach again next year.
Yes.
Since you're graduating in 2020, we wanna keep you next year as a peer coach, so congratulations and good luck on that.
Thank you very much. Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I'm actually gonna, I have a little something here to thank you for your time and your presentation to the board. I'm gonna ask Carrie to go ahead and pass that on to you. Again, thank you for your time, Asamoah. It's very important for us to hear from you, who are our students, and your experience because it reminds us exactly why we're here. And I know everyone hears me say that every time, but it's really important for us to be reminded of what we're doing and the support, and you just said it, the support that we all give our students, and again, why we're here.
And we can actually see some results.
And yes, and we hear about the great stories, so that's fabulous.
I'd like to make a comment. As a veteran, I just wanna say, Marine, thank you for your service. Appreciate it, and you wear that uniform well, and we're very proud to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Well done. Dr. Rothmer, would you like to come, oh, they're already over there. There you are. Would you like to give us some highlights about the Executive Vice President area?
Thank you, Chair Peterson, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. The last couple months, we've talked about the Higher Learning Commission, accreditation, and grants. This month, I wanna leave you all with a little teaser, and Chair Peterson, as you talked about results, one of the things I'll share with you that we're working on is the development of a data dashboard that will include the college's core measures, key performance indicators that are aligned to our strategic plan. We currently have a mock-up of that dashboard, and we plan on shopping it across all the college stakeholders over the next few months, and hope to present that to all of you in one of your early fall board meetings, and really to make that a transparent piece that's front-facing for people in the community, as well as the board and yourselves, to see kind of those core measures. We have that now on our website, but this will be a lot more interactive and easier to use with some software that we are implementing across the college. So we're very excited about being able to move forward in terms of building a culture of evidence for this institution.
Wow, great, super.
Thank you. Anything else for Executive Vice President?
Not for that, thank you.
Okay. Would you like to continue on and give highlights for the interim role for Academic Affairs Vice President, please?
Yes, thank you. And actually, I wanna use Trustee O'Hara's question in the work session as a segue into this month's update. So during the break, I was able to talk with Dr. Rand and share with Board Member O'Hara, and I wanna share with everybody, and this is really around the amazing work that our deans do, our faculty do, as well as our staff, in terms of recognizing, yes, while we do have strong resources at an institution, how do we best use those resources, and if we can save money to be able to better support our students, that's one of our key drivers. So one of the questions that was asked is about the radiographic equipment that's being purchased for special projects, because I think, Trustee O'Hara, you mentioned, it seemed like a good price, and it absolutely is, and it's typically the refurbished price. However, due to their work and working with the company, we're actually getting new equipment for a refurbished price, so it's, again, that common theme of really working hard with our vendors to get the best prices we can to support our students and our programs. And that really is kind of the overall theme that I wanted to talk with you today and share, again, what a great job Academic Affairs is doing in terms of engaging our partners throughout the community, as well as serving our community and others. So the examples I have for you today are from different areas of Academic Affairs. The first one I wanna share is our communication media faculty, staff, and students are working with the Adams and Weld County Sheriff's Departments, along with Brighton PD, Fort Lepton PD, and the State Patrol, and producing a video for a program called Every 15 Minutes, which is designed to discourage high school students from drinking and driving, and as soon as that's complete, we'll see about getting it either on our web or sharing it with you, so that you can see that great work that our students and faculty are doing with our community partners and highlighting that for you.
Wow, great.
The other, next two examples I wanna share with you is from our Ames Automotive Program, and I know that Dean Abernathy is here, as well as Fred Brown, so I wanted to recognize them for these two amazing examples. So the Ames Automotive Programs were recently selected by Subaru University, the educational arm of Subaru of America, to become one of their flagship institutions. A little bit of what that means is that we have received the Subaru Denzo Diagnostic Scan Tool with complete access to Subaru's technical manuals and training support, which is a $10,000 value. Additionally, and this is one that kind of piqued my interest as well, a factory order was recently placed for the Ames Automotive Programs to receive a new 2019 Ascent, Subaru Ascent, and that donation has a retail value of $50,000.
Wow.
And this Ascent is Subaru's newest, largest, and most technologically advanced crossover sport utility, and it will have all of the latest self-driving technology and safety features found in today's modern vehicles. So as you think about the way this industry is going and these partnerships, and what this team has been able to do to bring to our educational programs for our students is truly remarkable. The next part from the automotive program I wanted to share with you in terms of the faculty, staff, and students giving back, is that this past weekend, the Ames Automotive Service Program personnel conducted a Project Self-Sufficiency Car Clinic for clients in Greeley. And what this is, we had eight instructors, one teaching assistant, and four students worked on eight vehicles for Project Self-Sufficiency in our automotive center. And PSS is a program that provides training and assistance to selected single parents in northern Colorado who want to grow to become self-sufficient in a post-secondary education and then leading to career employment. And transportation is often one of those obstacles for these individuals, so it helps remove those barriers to provide a greater access to education. Going to the Arts and Sciences side of the house, wanted to share with you that our part-time art instructor, Dan Augustin, recently coordinated a donation of art supplies from Estes Park resident Charlotte Lloyd. Ms. Lloyd donated a truckload, literally a truckload of materials that included a dry mount press, glass cutter, mat cutter, and numerous other items that will allow our students to learn how to create custom frames and other art projects, and we look forward to incorporating these materials in our 2D art studio classes. And last but not least, wanted to bring back from a meeting last month, there was a question regarding some of our CTE trailers that are wrapped, and how they're out and about in the community, and did speak with Dean Smith and others, and they're putting together a schedule of where and when those vehicles and trailers will be, and so we can kind of highlight some of those different pieces. I know recently, it was out a couple weeks ago at the home show, they transport materials back and forth to Fort Lepton and also with different programs with the high schools, but we'll certainly share more information about that visibility of a lot of our programs and materials throughout northern Colorado. May I answer any questions for you?
Questions, member? Sounds great. Great report.
I just have a, is Zach in the audience?
Yeah.
Great PR stories right there for us to write up if we haven't, so.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Jensen, would you like to give us some highlights from Administrative Services and our monthly budget update?
Dr. B, I would love to. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you the budget report as of February 28th, 2019. Again, I'm happy to report that, looking through the revenue categories, we're continuing to be on track. As we finalize the year with tuition, we still have half a summer to come, so we will still exceed our budget for tuition by probably $100,000 or so as we head out into the fiscal year on that. Other revenue categories are all pretty consistent. Again, our state appropriations and our general property taxes are all solid, and we continue to receive royalties in our other revenue category. And again, as I mentioned in our work session, our interest income continues to be strong as the markets continue to do well at this point for our investments. So the revenue picture, solid, on track. As we look at the expenditure side, again, I don't have anything to report to the board that I'm concerned with, and that we're on track and on budget with our expenditures. Looking at the functional classifications, did receive a question on the public service amount of why we're over budget on that, and actually, it's money that we spend on upstate Colorado, but it's not an increase, it's just that in previous reporting periods, that had been reported under institutional support, and upon review of that, it was determined that that should be recorded as a public service expenditure, so it's not an increase, it's just a correction of where that was originally recorded, so it has to do with upstate Colorado.
Thank you.
That's the quick skinny on the operating budget for February 28th. Any comments or questions? Again, very solid, on track. Alright, I'm sorry.
Looks like we're, yeah, just doing very well.
Yeah.
It's right where it ought to be.
I'm almost thinking about making something up next meeting, just to...
Test us! Are we paying attention?
Just to create some controversy or something, I don't know. I jest, I mean, I say that with all respect, that, again, we continue to have a very sound financial picture, and I never want to overlook that, but sometimes a little humor. Facility projects, just a real quick update, again, go through some of these. Our Facilities Planning and Steering Committee, which is the committee overseeing our new college renovation, or college center renovation, and the new Welcome Center, we are, as we're now getting into the planning phase, we are moving out, giving ourselves a little bit of breathing room, and now talking, construction to begin in February. I've been professing to you that it's going to be starting in the fall, but a little bit later. We're just giving ourselves a little breathing room as we got into the more detailed planning of that. And again, you know, we create our own timelines, and so that's where we're on track for that. Our IT data center continues to move towards completion. Our third-floor ATTC, we're still scheduled for a move-in in the first part of June. The flight simulator, of course, has been removed, and irrigation and sod will be replaced here in April. The 50th Street entrance, you'll start to see final tree shrubs and sod scheduled in April, so again, those will be some exciting things happening in that part of campus. Also, on the front of campus, you may have noticed, we continue to have irrigation work being done out there, that's those trenches that are dug, being dug on the front of campus. And also, if you noticed around Horizon, we've completed Horizon Stormwater Drainage Project around Horizon. Again, just those are kind of things, as you're driving around campus, you see some dirt turned, just wanna keep in mind, you know, the board what those are. Down at our Fort Lepton campus, the welding project continues to be on task, and we're still continued completion for fall of 2019. The CDO lot, we'll start construction in fall of 2019, so two exciting projects for our Fort Lepton campus. At our Loveland Airport, I love this, Mike likes to say, "We're going vertical the week of April 1st." And so again, that project is on task, and again... And again, we anticipate completion July of 2019. And we're finalizing the work down at Fort Lepton for our sign. So, again, a very quick overview of the projects that we have. Again, amazing number of projects, the work that we accomplished on this campus, and we're always very proud of that. So, I stand for any questions on budget or facilities.
Just for the heck of it, Chuck, you said you cut yourself a little room and say, "Okay, now it's spring," rather than "fall."
February.
Or, "February," I'm sorry. Well, that's sort of spring. But is that a hard and fast timeline? I mean, if you're ready to go by the end of December, say, you go with it, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Again, we're just kind of giving ourselves a little grace as we work through and make sure we have the adequate time to, you know, really look at the issues that we want to address, engage the whole college community, and so.
Right, makes sense.
I would agree with that, you know, better plan, better place, better time.
Again, you know, we're setting our own timelines. We're not up against any budgetary restrictions from the state, or, so we'll do what's right for us.
And startup costs will probably be a little less expensive as you move into spring, I would think, too.
Very good. Thank you.
I was in the neighborhood yesterday, and so drove by the, the new airport facility, and it was fun to see the swarms of people and machines and things going on there, so. They're digging and pouring cement and stuff on the side of the building.
Are we allowed to build a bigger sign down in Fort Lepton?
I think...
Yes.
Is that a thumbs up?
Yep.
There you go.
They're happy, as long as it's bigger than the Greeley signs. That's what they said.
Yeah, it'll be a very appropriate sign for that highway frontage, so, yeah, we're very excited about that.
At least three stories tall, right?
It's like a movie drive-in theater.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
You'll see it from, like...
Frederick.
Miles away. Boulder, I don't know.
Hudson.
You know, we talk about the sign on campus, but also out on the highway, it still says "South Campus" or something like that, rather than Fort Lepton Campus.
Must be one of the highway green markets.
Those CDAT signs say "South Campus."
Yeah, to get them to change the sign is, literally takes an act of the governor.
Well, get on it.
We'll, we'll, we'll put that on our, we'll put that, put that on our list of things to do.
It just always bugs me to see that.
South Campus, yeah.
Yeah, "South Campus."
That's fairly old terminology, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
When, when the campus was built, it was built as the "South Campus."
The "South Campus," okay.
Oh, is that right?
Well, we'll get on it, and, you know, 10 years from now, maybe it will be changed.
Mike and I will get out there with a spray can, and we'll fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Mr. Allman, would you like to give us an update on community and college relations, please?
Good afternoon, yes, I would. Let me get organized here. All righty. Well, first of all, the Community and College Relations Division is doing remarkable things for, for Ames. And I'm going to start with our satellite campuses, because they are busy. First of all, at our Fort Lepton campus, you remember that they did the Ag Day last month on the 19th? Tremendous success. It really was a tremendous success. From the community, they had a 125% increase in attendance.
Oh, wow.
You know, from last year, which is just phenomenal. They also hosted the after-hours gathering, you know, that Thursday as well, and had representatives there from three of the area chambers of commerce from Fort Lepton, Carbon Valley, and Southeast Will. So, really made some great inroads there as well. The campus also hosted their Future Farmers in America statewide competition there, had a great time, 250 kids were there doing great stuff. I had opportunity to go down there, what a ball, what a ball, just a lot of fun. And we also had, I think there are 12-plus more of the, of the Fort Lepton staff and faculty that were engaged and involved, so just a lot of great things, and everybody just had a great day there. And then, one other thing that I would just kind of want to make a note here, we had one Ames student, his name is, I gotta get this right, Justin McEntee, he's from Firestone, and he passed his welding capstone course presenting a final project, a pressure tank, which held an astounding 1,000 PSI. Okay, for those of you who are kind of in that, know that, you know, kind of the average is about 200 to 300. And he just did a phenomenal job. And his, his instructor, let me get this, Miles Shear, he said Justin is easily in the top 2% of the welding students he's ever had.
Wow.
And not surprising, because he's done so well, he's already employed. And he got a job, one of the fellows, he's a personality on the Discovery Channel, Gold Rush, but apparently he's an area gentleman in Weld County, I don't know where, and I wish I knew his name, but I don't. But anyhow, he got wind of this young man and hired him.
Freddie Dodge?
Freddie Dodge, yep, yep. So, way to go Ames, way to go Justin. So, a lot of great stuff there. Our Loveland Campus is doing great things. We've got on April the 12th, so next week, from 4:00 to 7:30, they're doing a spring art exhibition. The featured artist is Amelia Furman, and her theme is Laramore County Natural Treasures. So, if you're available, I'd love for you to have you attend that as well. The Windsor Campus, they had a blowout event last Wednesday. They had a recruiting day, and this is the first time they had fire, EMS, and the police that were there, police agencies that were there, all told they had 40, which is just fantastic. I had an opportunity to kind of circle through there, and it was just amazing. And there were just gobs and gobs of our students who were there. And you know, the best part about that particular recruiting day, those folks are hiring. Yeah, so it was just a great event. So, a wonderful partnership with the Ames Career Office, so our hats off to them, you know, working with our folks out there at Windsor to get that done. So, a lot of good stuff. Our Ames, our admissions recruiting folks, they held their third annual bilingual college fair last Saturday, and again, just another great event. They set a record, they had over 160 participants in this, so it was absolutely just fantastic. And again, a great partnership between the admissions recruiter, Lizette Galindo, Dr. Mario Gonzalez in SACE, the district six schools, and the area colleges. So, looking forward to that, and just continues to do well. And capitalizing on this, we're looking ahead on Wednesday, April the 17th, to the admissions recruiting will hold a bilingual college 101 at the Fort Lepton campus. So, you can see, our admissions recruiters, they're busy this time of year, so a lot, a lot of great stuff, very proud of them. Our foundation, they held their, their annual retreat, and probably one of the biggest, if you will, outcomes that came from the retreat was the fact that they decided they're going to go with kind of a whole new approach to advancement or development, what do you want to call it, philanthropy. And they're moving to kind of a transformational approach, which means that they're all about building relationships. Instead of just kind of, you know, one-off events where we might get a few dollars here and a few dollars there, it's about cultivating and building relationships with individuals, agencies, businesses, and all these different types of things, which is just fantastic. Because, you know, as you know, is, you know, people build a relationship with you, you learn about the organization, the organization learns about what you really are passionate about, is able to match that up and really do some great things. So, hats off to the foundation for really putting that together, and headed in a really great direction with that. Also, for the foundation, they just completed their employee giving campaign, and they did a great job. They had a 39% increase in gifts through payroll deduction. They had a 3% increase in one-time gifts, and then a 35% increase in the number of employees participating. So, we've got a total number of employees of 202 across all campuses, so, which is just fantastic. Now comes the interesting part, governmental affairs. Dr. Peterson, to get to your question earlier about the Higher Education Reauthorization Act, as you know, Senator Lamar Alexander of Tennessee is very hot on this issue. He's leading the charge on this one, and he's pushing it hard because he retires in December. So, yeah, once they're out of session, he's done. And he's really pushing this hard. They've got some good bipartisan support, both sides of the aisle to make this happen. Unfortunately, they're just kind of hammering things back and forth. The goal, and they, a lot of the articles I read, there was one in the Atlantic that just came out just last month, said that there's a good, strong probability that we'll finally get done by the end of this, the end of this year. So, we hope...
It's only been, what, 10 years now?
Something like that, exactly, exactly. It's supposed to be, what, every five, but hey, who's counting? Yeah. If you've looked at our Colorado Legislature, well, they continue to be very busy. And they're going to be busy until the 3rd of May, on a Friday, when they're finally done. So, a lot of bills are just kind of really moving along. Now, as you know, two weeks ago, we had Katie Jensen from SACE, who did a, did an excellent job testifying at the Capitol, providing student stories in support of House Bill 1196 on financial aid for students with, with in-state tuition. Well, not to be outdone, we had Vice President Chuck Jensen was down there Monday, and just did an excellent job in testifying on behalf of, before the House, on behalf of debruising, and how that has impacted Ames. We've done that 29 years ago, and it's like, what has been the impact of that on Ames over this time? And the testimony that Mr. Jensen gave, along with many others who testified, they, he gave the facts of Ames, of debruising, and then the benefits that have come about as a result of that for our students, to enhance the student experience, to increase opportunities, to increase resources. So, all of that was very well received. And Tanet, whom you know as our lobbyist, said that both Chuck and Katie just did an excellent job. That's great, because what that does is it takes Ames Community College, puts us before the Colorado Legislature, and it says, "Look at these people and what they're doing. Look at this institution, the great things they're doing for their students and their community." So, you know, thank you to those who testify and just do great things there. SB 181, there you go. Yep. Public welfare, oil, and gas operations continues to be in the news. As you've been following the news, the House passed the bill last week with three amendments to it. One that I just remember off the top of my head was the Colorado Commission, just kind of changing its focus there. So, they're not going to call it the Colorado Commission, it'll be an independent commission, which, you know, has some, you know, import, importance for us as we go forward there. The bill is now waiting for the governor's signature, but once it's signed, what is going to happen next, the lawsuits begin, as you might suspect. And so, which is going to cause, which has the potential to cause delays in how, you know, how the bill is enacted. And as you know, when they throw up the lawsuits, it's kind of like they take everything in the kitchen sink and just throw it up against the wall and see which ones are going to stick, and, and then the impact that'll have on whether the bill is enacted, or certain portions are enacted or not enacted. So, we've got to kind of wait and see on how that one's going to shake out. So, it's going to be kind of interesting. So, we just kind of wait for the days and months ahead to see what's up with that one. The educational budget is still in committee, and so we're waiting to hear, we hope, well, it'll be done by the, by May 3rd, because they'll be done. So, we're just waiting to hear more on that. I'd like to end on a positive note, and that's our marketing communications team. They won two awards.
Oh.
They won a gold and a bronze, and they were awarded by the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. They received a gold for their security and emergency brochure, and a bronze for the "The Beat Goes On" program. So, a lot of great stuff there, you know, again, big hand to those folks there. And keeping up with that kind of remarkable theme, if you will, we've got a handout in front of you here, and one of the things that we are building on, we had to take a look at our website and get that done, one of the other pieces, was take a look at the My Ames Portal, which is on the website, and this is for students, faculty, and employees. And they wanted to increase the, the user experience, make it more user-friendly, and so they went in there, and that would be, they would be Allison Byerly and Jenny Diaz, who's really spearheaded this project and just did a great job, listened to the constituency, what it is that they wanted, and then just, you know, put it all together. So, what you've got are some screenshots here of what the, the front landing page looks like, and then what each one of the other pages look like. If you look on the front there, you've got student, faculty, and employee, and you've got, you've got the fists, you've got the hand, and then you've got the bunny ears. Okay, I'm slow, but you know what that is? Rock, paper, scissors. Exactly. So, a little bit of humor there, so a lot of good stuff. But just, this is just for you, you to review, and you'll notice one of the nice things that they did as they put this together, they grouped like items together, so you don't have to go hunting for it. It's not in this long list of information there that you've got to go searching through and probably miss it, go back and start thinking difficult things, because it's like, where the heck is this? They did a great job of putting this together. So, that's just for your awareness as well. Finally, if you take a look, I have a to-do list. Now, the to-do list this month is relatively short, because next month, your to-do list is huge. So, we'll take, we'll just give you a little bit of breather this, this month. So, the first thing is, if you would, attend the spring art exhibition at the Loveland Campus. You see, it's on Friday, April 12th, from 4:00 to 7:30. And then, if you would, attend the bilingual college 101 at the Fort Lepton Campus, and you've got a flyer in there that is bilingual. So, that's just for your information and your awareness as well. So, that concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Timothy, did you say there were 40 departments, organizations at the public safety?
At Windsor, yes, I did.
Yeah, okay.
It was fantastic.
I mean, that just about has to be over Police Department, Fire Department, and Quell County.
They were all over, Weld County and beyond.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were just, they were all over, and just great stuff, and they were just, they were thrilled to be there, and like I said, they're hiring.
Yeah.
Do you know, Susan, do you know how long the art exhibit is up in Loveland? I'm going to be out of town on the 12th.
I think, Heather, are you here?
Up through mid-June, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
On the foundation, that's great news as far as reaching out in the community and creating those new tipping points between business and private, the private sector as well as publics. Is the board going to increase its size?
Don't anticipate it increasing its size at this time.
How many members are there?
I think there are six, is that correct? Six, yeah. So, you know, maybe once we hit...
That might be a consideration, if you want to reach further, bigger board. They're really not making huge decisions, they're reaching into the...
Sure.
...the community and creating those tipping points.
Well, I know they have a cunning plan to tap in, the board members to tap into alumni and other partners to increase that outreach, so, which is, which is great, because if we can get some of our alumni to partner with that and go out and spread the word, how awesome is that?
If 12 outstanding citizens came up and asked you to be on the board, would you, what would you tell them?
Well, we'd have to take that as a hard consideration, yeah.
Okay, think about it.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Timothy.
Dr. Weissgiver would like, would you like to give us an update of student engagement, inclusion, and success?
Oh, you know me so well, of course I would like to.
Don't you like it when she says, "Would you like to?"
Would you, as if there's...
What if they say, "No," then what do you do?
Then I've changed the, to this question to a statement.
She knows I would love to. She knows I would love to. So, starting out with just some quick highlights from the score calendar, I know that our SGA president, Dulce, did a great job highlighting some of the pieces that are there, and I just want to underscore some of the pieces that she shared, as I think we may find some, some community members in attendance that might be helpful for you all as you're engaging on campus. So, the first piece would be, of course, tomorrow, the Frank Mink Discussion. If any of you have seen the movie American History X, it came out in the 90s, this was a movie that was based on his autobiography. So, it's going to be very powerful, very moving. I know we have a class from Early College Academy that is going to be joining us. As I understand, there may be some city council members there who are part of the Holocaust Memorial Observance Committee in Greeley, so this is going to be a great opportunity for the board to connect with other members in the community and hear a very moving, powerful speech about how we can reduce hate. Other pieces that I would highlight, if you walk through Ed Beatty Hall, there is a Holocaust poster exhibit. And these are posters that were purchased about 10 years ago. They were purchased from the Holocaust Memorial Museum in DC, so they're irreplaceable, Ames property. And they go through a timeline showing you what happened throughout the Holocaust. Ames has been a very... Ames has been a very strong supporter of the Holocaust Observance Committee in Greeley for many years. And so, I just certainly want to highlight that for all of you as you're walking around campus. The other piece that I would highlight is the Zonta Club Silent Witness Display, which is an awareness-raising project for domestic violence. And this is an organization in Greeley that works with Ames every year, has for many years, where we share stories of people who have been victims of domestic violence to help raise awareness about how close domestic violence is to home. It's very impactful for our students, and it helps de-stigmatize domestic violence throughout the college campus. So, those are things that I would highlight to this board and encourage you to take a look at. I have a couple of highlights for you. The first is an operational highlight, and it's around the Student Enrollment Records and Testing Assessment, and what has now bloomed into what we're calling a Process Reimagine and Redesign. And this is from our strategic plan, and it's based in strategy two, so our operational performance, policy and procedure and process, line 36 for any of you who are taking notes, Carrie. What I'm really excited to share with you about is we have been working with Campus Works to really help us streamline the student experience as they come onto campus. So, everywhere from perspective student admissions recruitment, all the way down through then where we land with the student being in seat. And so, with some really incredible collaboration with Dr. Rothmer and VP Omen, we've had the opportunity to really look at some of the areas in our units across campus that can be reimagined and redesigned. So, so far to date, we have worked with concurrent enrollment and dual enrollment. We have worked with admissions and recruitment, Ames, the Ames Testing Center. Next up, we'll have academic scheduling and curriculum management, academic advising and student planning, and finally, student enrollment and student accounts. We will end with those Process Reimagine and Redesign on June 25th with a report to the Cabinet, letting us know where we can enhance what our work is doing. The thing that, for me, feels very exciting about this is it's coming at a very amazing time as we think about the new buildings that are coming onboard, and we really do have some enhanced flexibility to create the ideal student experience from the beginning to the end. And so, I'm, I'll be excited to share with you next fall, when we come back in August, what the outcome of those, of those assessments are. The other highlight I have for you is around graduation and commencement, our very most favorite thing to talk about all year long. I can share with you, I was chatting with our new registrar, Kelly Christman, and I asked her how many graduation applications we've received to date for the last calendar year, and she told me 1,771 students have applied for graduation. That's impressive and very, very exciting. We are also noticing what I would call, although I haven't run us the test on significance, a significant increase in our projected graduates who will be walking. Last year, we had 407 graduates who walked in the commencement ceremony. This year, we're projecting an increase of 500 to 550, so we're looking at a 20% to 26% increase in graduates walking. Yes, that's exciting. There's been some change in communication and how we're reaching out to students to help them celebrate this event and really mark it as a milestone for them and their families. As a result, Dean McCaslin has done an amazing job working her way with the Budweiser Center and opening up additional seats. Our seating capacity last year was around 3,200, this year we'll be at 4,100 with a little bit of room for overflow. So, we're really trying to ensure that our students can invite their whole family to be a part of this really incredible event. So, also, as a result of that growth, we're going to notice some things changing this year. Rather than having students walk up one side, walk across the stage, and come down the other side, we're going to, we're going to get really busy and have students coming from both sides and then coming down the middle. So, we'll have two name readers, so students can move through faster, and then they'll come down the middle aisle, where they will be able to greet their faculty who have supported them, other students who have been a part of their journeys along the way. The board members will have a job during commencement, and that is that we will be walking you through the diploma handing to Doctors Bornstein and Dr. Rothmer, so that we can make sure that students have an opportunity to meet you and you can be a part of this process. One thing I will ask, and I'm going to give you a whole bunch of details in May. If you're like me, you don't want details too soon, you want details right, right when you need them. So, in May, I'll have some floor plan for you, so you can see what that will look like in our board meeting, and you'll get a better understanding of what your role will be. But I'd like to encourage you, very strongly encourage you, very, very strongly encourage you, to be at the Budweiser events that are no later than 3 o'clock, so that we can do our walkthrough and you know what your role is. We will start commencement at 5 o'clock sharp. This will be not your last reminder of that. So, what we're seeing, what we noticed last year is that families are showing up early so that they can get a start too. So, we'll probably start to see families arriving around 3:30 or so. And so, it's important to have the board members there and the rest of the stage party to ensure that we can move through that process and, and you can feel comfortable with your role. With that, that is the, the end of my highlights today. Is there any questions I could answer?
I'd like, just like to ask you, you said a thousand and some have applied for graduation, which sounds like a super number, but how does that compare with, say, last year?
You know, I do not. No, I do not. And unfortunately, there is no one here in the audience who can help me with that number. That person is in LA. And so, I can get that information for you. Yeah, absolutely. I would say, given the number of graduates who are walking, we are likely up, but I would like to double-check before we take that to the bank, as it were.
Okay. Any other questions, members? Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great news all around.
Yep.
Just a few remarks from myself. You'll notice in your packet, Selected Meetings from March, that's a shorter list than usual because you just got that list also a couple of weeks ago. But there's one particular that I would like to mention, it's the second bullet point down there. It says, "Joint Meeting with UNC President and Cabinet and Ames President and Cabinet with the new Executive Director of the Colorado Department of Higher Ed, Dr. Angie Pachoni." So, this actually was a really wonderful collaboration between UNC and Ames. Dr. Pachoni wanted, is on her listening tour and visiting, and wanted to have tours of campuses across the state. And rather than having her come up and have a visit with Ames and then separately with UNC, we decided to partner together, have our cabinets and both presidents facilitate a conversation, a lunch conversation, and then each president having some private time with her, but then also separate tours. And it was a fabulous day. She, she left both UNC and Ames and Weld County, if you will, singing all of our praises, swag bags, you know, wonderful. She also brought Lindsay Sandoval, who is their marketing and public relations person. And so, there's, there will be many, many press releases forthcoming from her as well. So, it was a, it really was a fantastic collaboration and day, so I wanted to point that out. As usual, if there's any questions you have on the meetings you have in front of you, I'm happy to answer and respond.
I was sort of disappointed in the coverage that the Tribune gave that meeting.
I know, me too.
They just, all about UNC, and oh, by the way, she was at Ames too. And that was about it, and-
I'm sure Timothy and Zach are going to be working on that relationship, for sure. But yes, I agree. But certainly internally, it was, it was great, it was fabulous. I will let you know, as, as you've heard, this is pretty typical time of year where just, and Ann, I'm sure will be nodding her head. My calendar is packed, so really, yeah, Ann is, yeah. So, between now and mid-May, you know, after commencement, it's just all out. So, just to let you know, obviously, I'm always available for you all. I just may not be in person available for you all, so I'll just let you know that my schedule is pretty crazy moving forward. Do you have any questions?
We do have your phone number.
Yeah, you have my phone number. Yeah, absolutely you do. You know how to get in touch with me. Any questions on that before I move to employee report? Okay, employee report. Are there any supervisors in the audience that have new employees that you would like to introduce at this time? I see a hand, please, I can't see a face, but I see a hand, please stand up, there you go, Susan.
Hi, Dr. V, members of the board. I'm really delighted to introduce our new full-time staff member in the Learning Commons. This is Shalise Nelson. Shalise has a long and strange history with us. She is an Ames graduate.
All right, yeah, wonderful.
She was a member of last, of last year. She began in the Learning Commons with us as a work-study student, was a highly valued work-study student, learned every aspect of the Learning Commons. She moved on to be a senior next-day learning resource technician on the Windsor campus. And that's a very unique campus and has many kind of unique parts and unique constituencies. And Shalise was really sort of the backbone of that Learning Commons operation for a while. Until we brought her back to Greeley to become a library technician, her professional library technician, still part-time position, but it really gave her deep knowledge of the library side of things, and has now made her our GoTo trainer as we bring in learning resource technicians in. So, a full-time position opened, yay, finally. And Shalise committed to joining us as a new staff member and as a full-time learning resource technician. She's a GoTo person on Excel. She ensembles a lot of our training, both of our staff and also training externally. Faculty request her specifically to provide Windows Quick Start, Excel, D2L orientation. So, she's a real gem, and she is homegrown. And we'll keep her as long as possible and keep her moving up the line, so I introduce her.
Thank you, welcome. Any, oh, Mike?
I'd like to introduce Rich Murphy, who, you know, names about a month, is part of Ames' facilities team as a learning resource technician. He makes a lot of broad experience at Ames over the years, so he's, he's welcome, Rich Murphy.
Any other supervisors with new employees? No? Well, thank you, everyone, and welcome for new folks. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's report.
Thank you, Dr. V. And moving right along, we move to Action Items, number eight on our agenda. And Dee Schultz.
Good afternoon, trustees. I'm here to present Action Item 8A, Compensation Proposal for Fiscal Year 1920. This proposal supports our strategic objective, talent development. Our tactic is Compensation and Benefits Package Review, line 46. The current pay-matrix structure for staff and benchmarks for administrator positions was established in 2005. Since 2005, incremental increases have been made to the pay-matrix structure and benchmarks, and new positions have been added to the structure with individualized market assessments. The purpose of the compensation review is to align the staff salary-matrix structure and reestablish the administrator benchmarks to the current market, allowing Ames to be highly competitive in our recruiting efforts, reestablish internal equity among the various classifications, and minimize current and potential compression with new hires within similar classifications. Administration is recommending a three-step approach. Step one is a request for an annual increase of 4.2% for full-time faculty, staff, administrators, and part-time staff, which will include work-study positions. Step two is a matrix structure and benchmark increase due to the realignment and Colorado minimum wage increases. And step three, compression and equity adjustment due to the step-two realignment. Fiscal impact is a total increase of just over 2.9 million. Administrative recommendation is a motion to approve steps one, two, and three due to the results of the compensation review.
Okay, members, you've heard your report. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve steps one, two, and three of the administrative recommendation due to the results of the compensation review.
Thank you, trustee Ruckel. Second?
Second.
Jean O'Hare, was that who did it?
No.
Oh, it was Mark, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mark. Okay, discussion.
I think, I think just for, for information for the audience and, and our TV viewers, just so that they know that we had a work session on this last month, and so, we're not discussing it because we get it. We, we had all our questions answered last month.
And I would like to say also that I think it's worthy of putting on the record for our TV audiences, Carol said, that this changes lots of several folks' salary and grade and so on, but no one gets reduced, as I understand.
That's correct.
Everybody stays even and summary increases, so. So, it's a very equitable approach, which I think is just a doggone good idea.
And we keep moving towards parity for, for our college with the rest of its peers, and that's, that's important too. I think that gives us an even, even balance sheet when we're looking for new staff and faculty that way.
It's set us up very well.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose no, that motion is carried. Now, Action Item 8B.
This next item is Health and Dental Insurance Benefits Proposal for Fiscal Year 1920. Ames participates in the comprehensive health and benefits plan, developed and managed by the State Board of Community Colleges and Occupational Education. Ames is a member of the Benefits Advisory Committee, which meets monthly to review claims experience, adjust plan coverages, annually receive provider service and rate proposals, and to take action on how earnings from the SBCCO Benefit Trust, established in 1983, be applied to buy down future premium costs for the participating colleges and their employees. Current medical benefits include plan options provided by Anthem and Kaiser, and dental benefit options provided by Delta Dental. Plan changes for fiscal year 1920 are expected to be minimal. Currently, Ames provides 100% coverage for employee-only tier and 85% coverage for the two new tiers, plus children and plus spouse. Last year, you graciously approved coverage for the plus-family tier at 87% for the current year, with the intent to face coverage back down to 85% by fiscal year 2021. Open enrollment for employees begins in April, therefore, approval of comprehensive health and benefit plan payments is timely. Our administrative recommendation is a motion to maintain coverage for employee-only tier at 100%, coverage for plus-children-and-spouse tiers at 85%, and change the coverage for plus-family tier to 86% for fiscal year 1920.
Okay, members, you've heard the, the motion is, I mean, yeah, the motion, is there a motion for approval?
Let's move.
Thank you, Lyle. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jean. Any discussion?
I think it's remarkable you don't have any cost increase with this, I don't know.
We've been able to maintain our co-hosts and-
Must have strong-armed quite well, thank you for your due diligence.
And as Representative, er, trustee Ruckel said on the previous motion, we have already gone through this to a pretty healthy degree. And so, it's not that we're sitting here just taking it, but we've had quite a, quite a discussion and lots of input, so. Further discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose no, that motion is carried.
Thank you very much for your support, we really appreciate it.
We really appreciate it.
Yep. Good job.
May I get up here?
Item 8C. Trustee Oxlicker.
Thank you, Chair Peterson. Once again, this year I was very honored to chair the committee for the selection of the Distinguished Fellow Award. This is really exciting for me and for all those other committee members who sit on this committee. It's, it's very much an honor and very much a challenge. The nominees that are received for this award are, are many, and they are all very distinguished as outlined by the nominations received. It is, however, the, the charge of the committee to select a distinguished fellow. So let me give you a summary of the issue for those of you out there. The Distinguished Fellow Award is granted by Ames Community College in recognition of outstanding service to the college. Annually, the Board of Trustees may recognize extraordinary commitment, allegiance, and contributions by the individual to the mission, vision, and values of Ames Community College by naming them as a distinguished fellow. So out of the nominees presented, the committee shall select one as the recipient to be named at the Distinguished Fellow Award. The criteria that we have to consider is as follows. Longstanding efforts to advance the goals and purposes of Ames Community College and/or higher education. B, the championing or supporting of students, learning, and service. C, significant contributions to the furthering of scholarship in the state, county, community, or the mission of the college. D, have served as an outstanding example to the employees and students of the college. And E, possess high level of character, integrity, professional expertise, and leadership. And F, enhance the reputation and relationship of Ames Community College with its service So again, this is an incredible challenge, but we did come up, as we were charged, with three people, and the committee is pleased to announce the unanimous selection of Mr. Larry Wood as the recipient of the 2019 Distinguished Fellow Award. Mr. Wood served as the college, as a college trustee from 2009 to 2017, and the nomination for Mr. Wood expressed in part, during his tenure, he championed the mission of the college and the needs of its students, both internally and in the greater Weld County area. So I'm very pleased to announce that Mr. Wood is this year's distinguished fellow.
Okay, thank you, Lyle. Is there a motion on this motion?
I move the approval.
Thank you, trustee Ruckel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Any discussion? Did I miss it again?
O'Hara.
O'Hara, yeah.
I just want to add one thing. I couldn't get my computer here to scroll, but I did mention, I did omit one statement, so as a matter of further discussion, that's okay. The committee also recommends that the second and third nominees be advanced for consideration for the following year. Just need to make that part of this, so.
Very good. Yeah, so we've got sort of a pool already to draw from.
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
Wait, wait, wait. Okay. I appreciate what, what this committee did because Larry was a performer. He just taught you every time he spoke about observational skills, and he was always self-aware about that. He was never indulging. He just, he just did the right thing all the time, and I, I learned a lot from that man over my tenure, my beginning tenure, and I'm glad he picked this guy, too.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, just in discussion, I want to say, and one of the things that came out in, in the nominating committee was that Larry was a trustee here when the college was going through some fairly significant hard times, if you will, and due to his financial expertise, his influence in the community and everything else, he was a big part of putting Ames on the path that we currently find ourselves on. So that was a huge consideration in, in him receiving the nomination, as expressed by all the committee members, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I was going to say almost that same thing, you know, that his financial, financial, whatever it is, acumen was probably, if there's any board member that could take any credit in it, he's probably number one, because he really, I wouldn't want to say he was a penny pincher, but golly, it's awful close when you get down there, so he really kept us on the straight and narrow, getting the budget where it is now. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no, that motion has carried. All right. And that, that will be presented at graduation, I think, right? Isn't that what we do?
Yes, that's.
Yeah. Okay, now, the next thing on the agenda is for the board to go into executive session, and I assume we will do it in the room back there, is that right? So is there a motion to adjourn and reconvene in executive session?
On some move.
Thank you, Lyle. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Jean.
Jean. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, no, that mission, that motion has carried. Feel free to hang around if you want to. There's not, there won't be any decisions or anything after we come out of executive session, but we will be back here to reconvene the regular meeting as required by law and then adjourn from there. Okay, the meeting will come back to order, and I've got these glasses on to see where we are. Board calendar. Any additions or corrections to that? Anybody?
It's a big one.
I'm sorry.
It's a big one.
It sure is. A lot of stuff going on.
Gets busy.
And it's going to get busier as we move toward the graduation. Okay, nothing there, then how about June Retreat? Yeah, June Retreat. Carrie?
Chair Peterson, trustees, we just have a brief update on your June Retreat, which will be on June 26th and 27th, and that'll be held at the Greeley Country Club. You'll have a full agenda on both days, including information on Active Shooter, legislative session debrief, strategic plan year-end summary, and service area history, as well as your yearly board accomplishments, your self-evaluation, and the president's evaluation, and you will also finish with the development of next year's board goals and CEO, president's priorities. Do you have any questions?
And I also understand that we will again have Dr. Pam Fisher as a, what do we call it?
Facilitator.
Facilitator.
Yes, correct. She will be present to facilitate.
She does a wonderful job, so look forward to that. Questions, comments? Trustee Ruckel.
I would request a birthday cake on the second day. Thank you.
You got it.
I wouldn't have surprised you.
It's your birthday?
God, you're getting.
Whatever. I'm just ensuring that I'm surprised. Oh, really? Oh, how thoughtful. I'm very good at that.
These demands from South County are getting ridiculous. A bigger sign, and now a birthday?
Yep.
Gee whiz. Okay.
At least the cake doesn't have to be bigger than the sign, right?
Oh, I don't know. What was the last cake anybody had? It's got to be bigger than that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, board members, any comments?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
A few things that, that have happened in the last month. I attended an art show opening for Joanna Muller, who's a print adjunct faculty member here. It's at the Union Colony Gallery, at the Toynton Gallery, and I would commend it to all of you. She is just awesome. We've already heard about the business after hours at, at the Fort Lepton campus. That was on Thursday. Friday was the, another ag day, and then on Monday, the campus hosted a farm-to-table lunch and learn for the Chamber of Commerce again, which was our folks and was really very interesting. Well done. I attended the Multicultural Fair yesterday, which was just spectacular. Yes, I'm sorry you missed it, Sarah. It was really, really very, very well done and great entertainment, fabulous food. Kudos to Janet Chase, really a wonderful job on that. I also attended the Dream Team banquet, where they awarded scholarships to Dream Team graduates, and thanks to the trio folks who were all there, I sat with Leah Share and Stephanie Lucero, and they sat there planning what they were going to do for these awardees who are coming to Ames. Oh, we need to send them this, we need to do this. I mean, they're lining everything out while they're, while we're at this banquet. It was really awesome, and I would hope that we could consider maybe being a sponsor for that event in the future. And Liz Show and Labor was nominated as one of their Supporters of the Year, and it was just really, I mean, oh, and she is still here. Yay! There were so many Ames people, there was really, it's a wonderful event, and I'm delighted to have been invited and able to participate in that. And just a reminder of the Recovering Skinhead Program tomorrow. I think it will certainly be worthwhile and interesting for those of you who can come in the perk, 12:30. I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Is this our time?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Russ, for the information on the trailers. I appreciate, even though I wasn't paying attention. I, I think it's really remarkable what we have to offer, how we, you know, Lyle was talking about how this college got set up. I mean, the individuals that came together created a tipping point, and how it's funded, it's unique. We have a president who, not like any others, that has the ability to do some of the things that are imaginable and unimaginable, and that's remarkable. I think we're very fortunate to have the faculty, the staff, the cabinet that we have in front of us today, and tomorrow, too, what will exist as we go through. Russ, 17 more trailers, was that? All wrapped. Out into our, our community campuses that we serve with our concurrent enrollment programs. They'll help initiate a lot, and I'd like to see that, but other than that, I'm so thankful for what you guys do every day. Privileged. I feel privileged.
Great leadership team. Very impressive. Keep up the good work.
I would just also echo, echo those comments. I mean, I'm just amazed at the wonderful things that everybody does, and I've forgotten now who was that talked about the art team down at the Greeley Community Center on some kind of a redesign, and she said, I guess she's gone.
The faculty.
Yeah, faculty said she hadn't heard. Whether they won, well, it's a foregone conclusion. For god's sakes, I'll bet no one else even heard when they found out that Ames was there, so anyway, that's just great stuff to hear.
I just want to say another great meeting. I love getting our current and former students up here. Asamoah was an absolute wonderful example of what Ames really stands for, as attested by one of our students and a student that has been other places and speaks from true experience about, yeah, I've been other places and then I came here, and that's a real wow factor, and that speaks to what we stand for and the great job that you all do out there. So again, congratulations. I love seeing that stuff. Great job, everybody. Thank you again.
And thank you for the, for the new photos that's really cool on the back wall.
Any comments about assessment of the board meeting? How'd we do? Everybody get enough information to act upon?
Always.
Everybody got information they asked for? I'm sure that's the case, too.
Nope.
Anybody who felt slighted that they didn't get a talk? I guess not. Anything else? Any, any comments? Rest of the board? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
On some move.
Jean, move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, we adjourn.